Good evening and welcome to the June 26, 2018 City Council Special Meeting. I'm Mayor Deborah Bertin. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Debbie Bertin.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Acker. Councilmember Bruce Bassett. Councilmember Wendy Wyker. Councilmember David Wiesentiner. And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda passes. We will now move to our first special business item, which is First Last Mile Solutions. And for that, we are welcoming Ross Freeman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bertin. Ross Freeman, your city's Sustainability Manager. This session here is a follow-up from about three months ago when we first touched on this topic. And what we're hoping to do tonight is iron out some of the last few details that would be contained in a proposal. Those were outlined in the Agenda Bill. And then see if we can achieve council approval to move forward with a summer pilot of a bike share program in partnership with Limebike. I will kick things off here with a few slides. And then at the end, we'll finish with the options that were in the Agenda Bill. And we'll have Representative Limebike right here, Isaac Gross, Seattle Area Manager, who will be fielding questions. And I apologize in advance, I have to run a few minutes early from the end to go deliver the Solarize workshop tonight. So it's a big evening for environmental matters. Just a quick recap. We touched on this last time, but this is really where this fits in the bigger picture. How this is funded is through those first mile, last mile funds. As you well know, there's a number of other mobility projects underway or in research. And the ride share program, as we've heard, is going rather well. We just launched some bike lane improvements and multimodal upgrades at Southeast 40th. Why are we doing this? It's yet another way to offer commuter options, to support car-free errands around the town center area, perhaps further. Very importantly to a number of residents, this could free up parking stalls that are overfull park and ride, which is now filling up at 7:00 a.m. on weekday mornings typically. And this could also help replace some lost metro service. As you learned a few weeks ago, the pilot program known as Tripool, where it was shuttle vans getting people to the park and ride, didn't meet the user targets. And so that's being retired. And this may be, you know, one way of filling in some of those gaps. This would be managed in partnership with Limebike, which currently is the only vendor with really a scale market-ready e-bike fleet. And that's of great interest for Mercer Island, given our terrain. We will have access to usage data. And the idea for this soft pilot would be sort of a simple launch, adapt as needed, relocate hubs if needed, sort of manage things as they unfold. Last week, so six days ago, we opened an online survey, promoted it heavily through all the different city channels. And actually, so far, we've done pretty well. We've had 335 responses. These are some of the highlights. We asked people if they tried a bike share anywhere, so this could be any city, U.S. or elsewhere, or the previous one in Seattle, which was a dockable system. So 40% of the people who answered have used something. And you can see here, there's quite a bit of interest in giving a summer pilot a try. You know, about one-third of responses said they could consider building it into a commute. And a little over one-third of the respondents said they would be interested in trying it for general errands, with about 10%, 15% people needing more information. We'll let that survey go for a few more days yet. It's still growing in responses. Just to map out, in the Agenda Bill, we had a number of potential locations where the bikes would be restocked on some kind of regular basis. And I'm calling these hubs. I don't know if, Isaac, I think you use the same terminology. This is really either nightly, or rather daily. It could be weekly, it could be three times a week. This is where the rebalancing would occur. Sort of restocking the most beneficial locations to the greatest number of people, so that they could reliably count on there being a bike there. These wouldn't all be used, this list here, but these are some of the most obvious choices. It's easiest if it's on city land or city right-of-way. And I have been in touch with the Chamber of Commerce, who is very supportive of the concept. So somewhere in that plaza in front of them, maybe one of them. And at the Congregational Church, we are leasing park and ride space there, so that's why that's on the list. I think it would be great to have something at the south end, but we haven't launched discussions yet about how that would work, what the land would be. And then it has come up as a question, well, could we do something at the high school? And what about Shorewood? Shorewood is a place that has quite a bit of residential density. It'd be nice to be able to try to build this in and assist people that are currently walking to the park and ride on the I-90 trail. So just real quick overview, the desire will be to launch this as soon as we could, run for three months, and look at the user data. I just took a few screenshots on the right, courtesy of Isaac there. That's some information from the UW's part of town. A heat map at the top, sort of looking at the common rides. And then there's all sorts of different ways to parse the user data by timeframe and type of user on the bottom there. And that's something we could do, the same with our pilot. We could easily promote this. There's already a lot of interest. I get quite a number of inquiries from the public about when this might begin. And we think it'd be very viable to have a promo code for first-time users, get people to, you know, give it a shot for free.
Ross?
Yes.
Can you go back to the other screen? It's too hard for me to read, but the bar graph, can you sort of elaborate what that is?
Oh, well, let's see, I'll look down here. Yeah, so what you're looking at, I think the selection on the very top left was, you can see on the top of the graph, there's a number of text boxes. And the very top-left one is clicked, and so it's revealing data from that. And Isaac can probably speak to that.
Yeah, sure. So...
Can you bring the mic?
You can come to the mic, yeah.
Sure, sorry. So that's different information that any partner of ours would have. So you could look at, I think, what Ross has pulled up is rides per day. You could also see, you know, number of bikes, make sure they weren't over. You could look at users, rides per day, ride time, and total distance. And then above that, you would see sort of a highlight of the average or median on all those, which isn't in the screenshots, but on the tool. Can you stay up here?
Great. Sorry, it's so small. Just a little bit of only. So without further ado, this is the slide we wanted to get to. And essentially, these, again, are the items, the options that were listed in the Agenda Bill as a starting point for discussion. After some good conferences with Isaac and his colleagues, came up with these three versions of looking at, you know, what might be feasible to launch. And so with that, we'd love to take questions and defer to Isaac on some of the technicalities and some of the proposal aspects. And again, I'll probably have to run in about 15 minutes.
Okay, we have Saleem, then Benson.
So Isaac, question if, on these options, since you, we just chatted beforehand, and you said there's two to five bikes kind of floating around the island that are transient?
Mm-hmm.
How do we ensure that if we pick 20, the ones that become island bikes, because they came from somewhere else, don't count against our allotment?
So if I'm understanding correctly, there would be, based on this pilot, an amount we would expect to have here. And we would target that in a certain range. And we have a similar agreement with UW, where we have sort of 50 bikes on campus. And some of those move on, and some of those move off. But, you know, we try and keep it around that area. And if, you know, it's going too far in one direction, then we will have someone from our team move those bikes to another area.
Be kind of a floating average, is that a fair?
Yeah.
Floating average, okay. I just, I want to pursue it, because five bikes of 20 is a pretty big percentage. And so if you let five bikes kind of come to the island before you pick them up, because that's just what makes sense for your business model, I wouldn't want to see you drop 15 bikes off, and kind of us be floating below the average at times.
Yeah, and I think that was the justification for having some level of compensation for the pilot, in a way that that makes sure that we have the resources and can prioritize this region versus the other, which is a little smaller, but doesn't have the same level of volume as some of the other.
So can you just say, maybe talk through, every night you would come and just ensure there's 20 bikes on the island, for instance? Or just give me an idea?
Yeah, well, we would be able to see on our app or our data tool, how many bikes are there at any time and at any location. So if, you know, for example, all the bikes were exactly where they should be, and in the hubs, we would do nothing. If there were half the bikes on the hubs, in the hubs, and the other half were in the island, send someone to the island, van, they'd move the bikes back to the hubs. If there was nothing on the island, we would bring 20 or 25 bikes over.
Great, thanks. Benson, then?
Tom.
Tom, then Bruce.
Yeah, you started delving into the area that I was interested in, and that is the rebalancing. And so, under option A, the rebalancing occurs Monday through Friday. So if you can just walk us through specifically, is that going to occur the night of or the morning of? And I guess, you know, I'm just trying to think this out, as far as if we're trying to encourage people to ride the bike to the park and ride, you would want them, I suppose, you wouldn't want a number of bikes in the south end, or in the mid-island, or whatever, so that people could actually access those bikes and ride them to the park and ride. So is the rebalancing done early in the morning, before that commute, or the night before?
So there are two primary times we would do the rebalancing.
Would you mind speaking a little closer to the mic?
Oh, sorry.
Because we record it, and that way...
Oh, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Can you, can you hear me better? Is that...
Thank you.
All right, great. Sorry, I'm not, I'm used to just speaking, I don't know. But so, there are two options for rebalancing. One would be in the morning, around 6:00 a.m., before people start their commute. And the other would be in the afternoon, probably around 2:00 p.m. So based on the needs and what we're seeing, we could, I would assume, maybe starting with the afternoon, so the bikes are by the park and rides for people for their afternoon commute. And then they could potentially use those to get back. But that's also something where we could look at the data and say, all right, maybe it makes more sense to rebalance in the morning, and have them at some of these more farther locations from the park and ride, and see how that plays out. And this is sort of discussions we've had with Ross of, he's proposed a few spots, and we said, all right, let's, let's try these spots out, see what happens. And if we're getting the usership and the ridership we want, if we see that certain spots are getting more usage than others, we can move more bikes there. And it's a sort of advantage to having the dock-free system. If, you know, we see something's working really well, we can move things there. And if we see there's an issue, it's easy to alter that.
Okay, great. We have Tom, then Bruce.
The rebalancing, you, this isn't my question, but I want to follow up on Benson's. The rebalancing allows you, you track where they're left every time, then, right?
Yeah, so we can, we can see where our bikes are at any time.
But you track that, and you tell the city, because patterns matter?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you would, you would actually have access to this, too. You'd be able to see sort of where the trips are happening.
Okay. Thank you for bringing us, to us, by the way. It seems like a really good opportunity to study additional forms of transportation. Last week, we had a six-hour discussion on the financial cost models from Mercer Island, and some challenges. And I'm gravitating toward option C. I think that that option allows us the opportunity to have sort of a zero-cost model, and it gives us a mixture of the pedal and the electric model. And that allows us to see which bikes get used more, too, which I think is something to consider over, say, option B, which is an all-electric fleet, or option A, which is an all-electric fleet. My question is, and you know, I guess there's a large part of me that believes if you're trying something new, let's start with the least expensive option, because that's your learning model, and then we can move up from there, or size appropriately from there. But based on some of the feedback that I've gotten from my emails, the service-level agreement, what I'm hearing is that twice a day, there'll be pickups for bikes that might not be returned to the hubs. Is that true?
So there are two times a day where there'll be...
Into the mic.
Sorry. So there'll be one rebalance a day under the first option. And there are two options of a time of day when that rebalance could happen, so either the morning or the afternoon.
And re...
Rebalance would be someone from the team coming to the island, either bringing bikes if there weren't enough, removing them if there were too many, or placing them in the predetermined hubs.
But you, let's say they don't get to the predetermined hubs, and somebody leaves one somewhere else. You know where that bike has been left, and you're going to go pick it up and put them in the hubs, correct?
Yes.
So the service-level agreement would be, every day, bikes that might get left in random locations will be picked up and put back in the hubs.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Bruce, and then I'm going to take a turn.
Sort of towards the same direction Tom was going, but with a different framing on it. Can you help, help us understand the economics of your business, and how it works well to go to an option? I mean, how do you make option C work, such that it doesn't cost us anything to do that option, versus the options A and B, that, you know, you feel like it's $130 a month per bike for those? I'm just trying to get a sense of why?
Yeah.
How, how things work.
Yeah, and the way we think about it is, we have, you know, a fleet here that we can place anywhere, right? We could put it in Mercer, assuming Mercer Island is open, we could put it there. We could put it, you know, in somewhere like Capitol Hill, or the U District, or the waterfront, or areas of downtown Seattle, where we cannot bring bikes fast enough. Literally, like, when the van shows up, there are people that are standing outside, so they can, so they can grab a bike. So there's a, there's an opportunity cost of bringing them here, but we want to sort of set up an economic model that works, where, you know, the residents of areas where there might not be as much usage are able to have access to the same product as areas where there's a lot more volume. Is that...
So I don't fully grasp that. Let me come at this slightly differently.
Okay.
I know I've used both the electric and non-electric bikes. And the electric bikes are substantially more expensive to the user. So you're making your business model work by charging enough, I assume, to, you know, cover the cost of having the users use the bikes, the amount that they're typically getting used. With the electrics, it's, I mean, obviously a more expensive thing to deal with. You've got to charge batteries, which we'll come to that question also here.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm, I'm still a little bit stuck on, if we have, let me try it differently. Is it the rebalancing that is where the cost lies? If we were to do a, an option D, which was 2025 electric bikes, weekly rebalancing, would you propose that as a free service?
Sorry, I'm not...
Well, if I look at options A and B, they are costing us $1,000 to, you know, $1,300. Option C is costing us nothing. The difference is the mix of bikes and the, and the frequency of rebalancing.
Yeah, so the...
Is it the rebalancing, or is it the mix of bikes that's driving the cost?
The rebalancing and the opportunity cost. So there's actually, based on usage, not a significant difference in the price of the pedal bikes versus the e-bikes. The average e-bike trip is about 10 minutes, which is about $250 or something. The thing is, they're getting significantly more trips than the pedal bike trips, because they can handle very different terrain.
Yes.
So it's partly the rebalancing, it's making sure they're in the right places. And the other is the opportunity cost of having those, those products, which get significantly more rides, in an area where they might not get as many rides.
Isaac, you, and you'd said that before, so I guess I'm grasping it now. What you're saying is you have a limited number of e-bikes available to you. You would, given all else being equal, put them in places where people want to grab them. And putting them here is not someplace where they're going to get grabbed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The reason we came up with these is because we think we'd love to have this product on Mercer Island, and just want to set it up in a way that...
Okay.
...we can provide to the community while also maintaining our business model.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So first of all, I think just a point of clarification, Ross, I'm going to look to you, and also to Kirsten, that this would actually be funded from the Sound Transit Settlement Agreement. There's a first and last mile bucket, so to speak, and so this isn't coming from city general funds? So while it is money that the city would be putting out, it is within the parameters of the Sound Transit Agreement?
Yes, it fits into that first mile, last mile bucket, which is $225,000 or so.
Okay, great. So that wasn't my question, that was a point of clarification. But I think picking up on a number of the themes that are going on around here, there's, there seems to be an interest in the extent to which we can amend on the variables that are here. So we perhaps run a pilot for a month, let's say it's option B, but we're hearing from the public that we want pedal bikes, or we're hearing that we want more bikes, or that we're hearing we want more or less in terms of rebalancing. What is, I assume that we could revisit it, but what would that mechanism look like? How would we do that? Especially given it's only three months?
Yeah, I think that mechanism would, we could, I don't know how, this is sort of my first meeting like this, I don't know the function, but maybe set up a point to, to check in a month or 90 days into the pilot, and see how things are going, review the data, and see if anything would need to be changed.
Okay.
But our, I think, our, I hope our mutual goal is to have something that goes beyond three months. So if we have to shift the three-month thing and make things work out, and we've, we've done this with the city of Seattle, and with Bothell, and UW, and, you know, obviously there are things we learn in the process, and we adapt, and, but the goal is to do something. And we're sort of seeing that with Seattle and UW right now, of extending beyond the pilot into something that's, that's sustainable, and provides value to both parties.
Okay, great. Tom, and then Benson.
Yeah, you may have already addressed this, because I was 10 minutes late, but the, the bikes that are being used are used with a credit card account, a pre-established credit card account, right?
Yep.
If an adult gives their credit card to their child, and they're hanging out with their friends, and they say, oh, look, we can get an electric bike, how, are there any rules around younger kids? Because, you know, I see a lot of kids with their parents' credit cards, and if they have set up these e-bike accounts, are there risks around those younger kids getting on those bikes and using them on the roadway?
I mean, that, so the terms of service, based on our thing, is you have to be 16 or older. And I believe, I'm not, I don't have them in front of me, that between 16 and 18, it's supposed to be done under parental supervision. And, you know, there are obviously helmet laws and everything like that. We don't have the capacity as an organization to be everywhere at every time and handle those things, but...
Some people apply the theory of evolution to this, too, but I'm just, I just wanted to understand, make sure that my understanding is correct, that they potentially could get themselves into these bikes and be on the roads with electric bikes, which might handle differently than their little BMX bikes. And then, yeah, I just, I still am with the option C, because that gives us the mixed model, and we'd be able to see road power, or pedal power versus electric power, and see what the utilization is a little bit more than on the zero-cost thing. Because, Mayor, I just was thinking about the, the money and the funding. Money's money, I think, regardless of where it comes from. So if, if we can look at our learning curve on a zero-cost option, then we can maybe enhance it from there. So if we start with a zero-cost option, and then move up from there, I think it'd be my recommendation.
Okay. I think right now we'll continue with questions, because we know that Ross needs to go in just a minute. So we've got Benson, and then Saleem.
So with, with Ross about ready to leave, Ross, do you have a, you have a minute to at least respond to why, or elaborate on the staff recommendation? But I actually have another question. But maybe, since you're here, maybe we should ask your recommendation.
Yeah, so the reason why I picked that, I mean, a couple of angles. I do think having, I mean, we're looking for this to be a success, and the city would like this to have great usage. Limebike would love to see this have great usage. This is really the first time of rolling a program out like this in a more suburban setting with, apart from town center, we have pretty low densities. So how is that going to work? It's, it's a real chance to gather some useful, useful data that could inform other experiments further out into the suburbs. So I think, as often happens on mobility pilots, Mercer Island is a great test area for that kind of thing, as a contained entity. We see this with King County Metro, often wanting to work with us, too. So in terms of recommending that, I think the electric fleet, having an electric fleet would just right out of the gate appeal to a wider user base, and more of the kind of first-time bicycle commuters, first-time bike users for doing errands, that might feel the distance is too great otherwise. So that's one piece. I think the daily rebalancing, I would love this to be so successful that we need rebalancing every day, to get those bicycles into the, the places where the most number of people can use them. You know, what we don't really want to see is a bunch of bikes around the Mercer Ways at the end of driveways, sitting there for days, because that's, that's not really doing that much. It helped one person go one direction, maybe, but it maybe not is, it's not coming back with a rider. So I see the need for daily rebalancing being significant in order to especially optimize this fairly small kickoff fleet. If we had 100 bikes, maybe we wouldn't need daily rebalancing. But with 25, I think each one of those really counts. So in sort of looking at the combination of options, that's why I suggested A. I think there's room to discuss within these, as sort of the direction that Bruce was going. But that's, of the three, that's why I suggested that one.
Benson, did you have a follow-up for Ross?
It wasn't for Ross, it was actually for Isaac, so.
Great.
If somebody else wants to take a turn.
Well, we've got Ross for the last few seconds.
Yeah, if there's any other...
Yeah, a quick question for you, Ross. My fear on the daily rebalancing is somebody goes to the park and ride, takes the bike to West Mercer Way, and then kind of expects it there in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
But it gets poached every night? Is that going to be a problem?
Well, I, we did start talking about that with Isaac, and maybe you can respond as to what you would foresee as a scenario where we could avoid people being stranded, if you like, that they took it the night before, and then they, they hope it's there in the morning. Maybe one answer is that we are really nimble with where the hubs are. And if we keep seeing a bike going one way to a certain part of the island, then we establish a new hub in that location, so that, that user could, if it's not at the end of their driveway still, they could walk a few minutes to the, to that hub, let's say. That would be one suggested approach. Again, with a real small fleet, we, we only have a few opportunities to do that. But that could be part of the ongoing discussion, is hopefully the, the fleet would grow. If you want to add to that at all.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, you know, in a couple of weeks of doing this, or a month or so of doing this, we'll have some really good data, and we'll understand what people's trips look like and the experience of a user. And we can reevaluate the sort of need for rebalancing, or where they should be rebalanced, similar to what Ross mentioned.
Bruce?
Charging. How, when, how much charge should I expect to have on a bike if I go and rent it? And at what point do you trigger it as, you know, time for it to be recharged before it gets used again?
Sure. So the bikes go about 50 miles. Huh? Oh, you're...
Thanks for...
The bikes will go about 50 miles, and that depends on usage. You know, you're 50 miles uphill, it may not go that far, but, you know. Typically, they go about, you know, three to five days in high-volume areas, maybe five to seven. When they're under 15% charge, they'll show up on our operations tool, and we'll send someone to switch the batteries. And they just pull the battery out, put a new one in, and potentially move it. And that's the other sort of advantage to the, the reason we were talking about the electric fleet, is the electric fleet is sort of higher, higher touch, right? Because they're, they're being used, they need to be recharged, and as they're recharged, they're typically moved to areas where they're more likely to be ridden.
Thanks.
Benson?
Isaac, on this Agenda Bill, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, well, I'm sorry. Okay. There's a discussion regarding different methods. Well, the question I really have is on just geo-fencing. And obviously, the intent is to keep the bikes on the island. So what happens? Tell me what happens if somebody takes a bike off the island? And then it also just describes that you folks have different incentives for encouraging people to end their ride near the hubs, or, you know. So I just want to know exactly what kind of incentives are being discussed? And how do you deal with this geo-fencing?
Sure. So geo-fencing, if you, if you actually look at our app, you'll see the areas that it's meant to be used, right? So you could see that the area of Seattle on the Lime app is surrounded in a sort of green area. And then you would look at, within that areas, the, the geo-fencing is more where you wouldn't want to park, right? So bikes placed... So Pike's Place Market, you'll see in red, that's discouraging people from parking there, and then we have geo-fencing for the islands like Bainbridge and Bremerton, where we had issues with people bringing bikes there and leaving them. The way I would imagine geo-fencing working for a place like Mercer Island is we would include you in the geo-fence, and we'd assume some bikes would come over, that people, if they wanted to ride from Mercer to Seattle, would have that option, but we would keep a sort of standard fleet on the, the order of what we've, we've promised. And in terms of incentivizing, I think the hubs are a really good thing. I think when a user rides to an area and sees three or four bikes in a line, they'll put that bike in the line. If they arrive and see nothing, then they're sort of like, okay, where, where should I put this? Ballard, as well, has put together, we, we're piloting something with them, where there are sort of specific bike-share areas that they, that they've built, and they're next to areas where, and this is something you can literally just do with some, you know, paint or something, just painting, you know, bike-share parking here.
That sounds more like a voluntary, you know, you, you hope that that's how people behave. And so the question is, is there an economic disincentive, or is there any type of penalty fund? I mean, I, I'm just asking.
Yeah. So we've done this more with scooters. We haven't done it as much with the bike product, but what we're doing is, when someone downloads the app and they're using the scooters for the first time, it'll show them, you know, this is how you park it, this is where you, they'll go through a tutorial. And then, once they've parked the scooter to finish their ride, they'll have to take a picture. And at a certain point, we'll have enough data on that, that we can sort of tell them if they're parking correctly, and potentially have disincentives at that point, but right now, it's really around user education, explaining to them, using the app and our engagement with them, of how it should be placed, and demonstrating what good parking looks like within a city, so they can see and emulate that.
Counsel, any further questions? Saleem?
We, we briefly touched on it before, and you had an answer, but I just want to make sure we have that public discussion about advertising on the baskets of the, of the bikes, and that we kind of discussed, since there are no controls around it, and there's no revenues, kind of discussed for the city from it, that we would just like, maybe to have that discussion, whether we want that or not, and if we don't, just amend the contract to not have that during the pilot.
Yeah, and I don't, because there's, I'm sorry, you mean...
I was just saying, can you clarify, because I sensed that there might have been a conversation that took place before. Can you talk to us about what advertising there is or is not on these baskets right now, and what would be expected in the pilot?
So there, there is no advertising in, in Seattle, or anywhere in the greater King County area. There are some markets where some people are interested in potentially advertising on the side of our bike baskets, but at this moment, that's not happening in Seattle, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it here, because we understand there'd be some spillover.
Okay, Bruce?
You mentioned scooters, and I realized when you did, that the, the agenda bill mentions scooters as well, but it's not teed up as, as part of the proposals that are on the table right now. Is, is there a thought on your side as to whether we just get the bike thing going first, and then talk scooters later, or...
Yeah, that's sort of the approach that we've taken with the city of Seattle, is let's finalize, let's get something that works, and then we can bring on, you know, let's either add on to the pilot or a future thing with scooters.
Okay, thanks.
Benson?
Yeah, Isaac, I, we've had this discussion, maybe not with you, but just in general, regarding helmets. And so I know that, at least on Mercer Island, the, or chief has basically told us that they rarely ticket somebody for not wearing a helmet, and I get that. And I, I'm just curious whether or not, in any, if you're aware of any bike sharing, obviously not around here, but maybe elsewhere, where they've been able to incorporate the use of helmets successfully? I mean, it, it may not be possible. I'm just, obviously, there's some practical issues, but I'm just kind of curious whether or not you know of any...
Yeah, I think there, there are groups that are trying things, like, you know, take a picture before you start the ride, to see if you're wearing a helmet, but what, what we've seen in the areas we really focus on are one, user education, because, you know, we can, we can give out helmets, we can do a lot, but at the end of the day, it's the user that needs to make that choice and understand the value. So when you're unlocking a bike, and you're sort of, you know, the thing's online, waiting to send the signal to the GPS, it'll say, you know, 80% of head injuries are prevented with a helmet, and it looks really cool. The other thing we do is we advocate for protected bike lanes, which I think there are in Seattle and Mercer Island, and that, I think, has had significant effect in reducing bicycle injuries.
Tom?
This might be a question for my colleagues here, more than you. I wasn't involved in the sound transit settlement, and I have to confess that I haven't read it since the settlement. Related to first and last mile solutions, is there a provision in the document, or in the construction of the station, that allows for bicycle storage? And the reason why I ask the question is, most everybody has a bike on the island, and I'm wondering if this, the solutions that we're providing are for people on the island, or for people who come to the island and, and want a tool around. I can remember when I lived in South Seattle, I would have loved to have jumped the, the bus and come over here and found an electric bike, and raced with my friends around the island, or whatever. So I'm just kind of wondering if, if the storage hubs are being provisioned for in the rail station, and then my next question would be, if, if they aren't, I can see how this is definitely linked to the first and last mile solution, and if they are, then it seems like these bikes might serve a different audience than the first and last mile solution.
The answer is yes, and Carrie is going to elaborate.
So to answer Councilmember Acker's question, I'm going off my memory, but I believe that the building permit application for the Sound Transit Station is going to have approximately 50 lockers for bicycle storage.
And I would just emphasize that, in the, in the course of, of design, the bike groups have been queried and participated and, and everything else, so, yes. So Counsel, do we have any more questions, or are we ready to deliberate? In which case, I would appreciate a motion.
I move to authorize staff to proceed with option A for a free-floating bike-share pilot program to launch summer of 2018.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Benson, did you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I, I will, and I appreciate the comments by Councilmember Acker, and I certainly, you know, given today's climate, I think, you know, obviously, money is money. However, you know, this is a pilot program, it's only going to run three months, and I think that we've got to do what we can to ensure the greatest usage on the island. And so I'm a little concerned about option C, in the sense that if we start off, the usage might not be as much as we would like, and then we've lost that period of time. So, again, given the shortage of time, I, I offer option A.
Okay. Bruce, did you want to add anything further?
I don't, um, I'd, I'd be fine with option A or option B. Option C, with the, the one, one week rebalancing feels a little low engagement to me, and I think we want to, especially as we're trying this out, be at a higher level of, of touch on these things, to make sure that everything is predictable for our residents, as they're trying to figure it out. I'm very pleased that staff's been able, and Kirsten, you get a lot of the credit for this, I think, been able to pull this together quickly, and to Limebike for their willingness to work with us on this. I think, you know, this, this is very much in the realm of, let's just try something and see if it, see if it works. We will undoubtedly learn a lot from it, and I can tell you, I've ridden their bikes a fair bit. I used, used one to get around Seattle, to a couple of different stops the other day, and to Saleem's point, there is very much a fear of poaching, in the sense that you go to, of stop, you, you head into the, I was at REI at this point, and I was very hopeful that no one would find the bike where I had left it, so that it would be there when I came back out. So I think there's a lot to be learned about people's behavior around these things. They are a lot of fun to ride, and I will certainly encourage our citizens to just give them a try. And I'll also say, well, we won't be, as I understand it, ticketing, for lack of helmets, doesn't take up much room in your backpack to carry a helmet and slap it on your head when you go for a ride, so think about that as you're, as you're doing this. But this is, I think, something that, that we will learn a lot, and it'll be a, it'll be a good trial.
Well, I think, I'm going to go ahead, I'm, I think I'm fairly similar to where Bruce lands. You know, generally, option A, option B would certainly be a possibility as well. So I think I have two questions or direction to staff, and the first one is, you know, I'm not sure I understand, because if, on the assumption that that is the case, I would like to think that after the first, whether it's the first two weeks or the first month, that there could be a milestone review, and the extent to which that we find out that we don't need as much rebalancing, or whatever other variables it is, you know, that influence the price, that we could adjust. Meaning that the first month might be option A, and then we might find month two is option B, and what if we even need to double the number of bikes on the island because we have such uptake? So I'm kind of feeling whether it's option A or option B is a little bit irrelevant to the extent that there's a commitment coming, you know, for some real-time assessment and agility, perhaps, in tweaking the contract as, as people start using it.
And I would like to say, it would be great to try at least a couple of months at the, the daily rebalancing, so that we can give the community a good opportunity to see the bikes, find the bikes, try it out, and know that they're going to be where they think they're going to be. If, you know, you were saying, you know, you were concerned about somebody poaching your bike, if people would like to build this into their routine, a commuting routine, having, knowing that on commuting days, for, you know, typical commuting days of Monday through Friday, the bikes will be rebalanced at a certain time of day, I think that encourages a little more trust in, in the system. And it's, it's a, it's a small dollar amount, and I appreciate the frugality of the council in, you know, considering that no matter where the dollars come from, there's still dollars spent. But I think we have a real interest in, in helping this pilot to be as successful as possible as it gets started, because it does take a little while, you know, more than a, a couple of weeks for people to build a new routine.
I'm still on option C, and mostly because the option A and B are all-electric, and I just, I, I think we should keep all of our options open. Some people want to do more pedal power, and if it, if it's within the town center and enabling shopping, maybe they just want to use the pedal power versus electrical bike. The, the cost, I don't know if the cost is different between pedal power and electric either, and I think option C also gives us the opportunity to see where, where the bikes end up, but if they end up, like, somebody hops one, goes down to the south end to visit a friend, they just got off the bus, and they're like, oh, I'll just give you a ride back to the bus down on I-90, the, the bike would stay there for a week. And I worry about, this is a longer-term discussion, but there've been quite a few bikes that have ended up in our neighborhoods already, that sit there for longer than a day, so I just want to make sure, and I hope this, whichever option we choose, I, I hope it's something that, that grows, and people rely on bikes more. But I just hope that whatever option comes out in the future, that they don't back off of the daily rebalancing, because they end up being refused in neighborhoods after a while.
You know, I think I'm, I'm an option A or B guy. A question to you, Isaac, going to Bruce's point, is it more predictable that they're balanced every night, for me finding a bike in the morning to get to the park and ride? Because really, that's, I want to get to the park and ride, and then I want to get back from the park and ride. If all the bikes every night are taken to the park and ride, how do I get to the park and ride? That's what I'm grappling with, with option A versus B, which is that these bikes will make their way from the park and ride, and since you don't grab them every night, there's some predictability that you'll have a way to get back to the park and ride the next day. And I, I guess I'm not understanding it well enough to say which is better.
No. No, yeah, I think, yeah, the...
Into the speaker, please.
Sorry. I think, based on the map that Ross showed, we, first off, we wouldn't put all the bikes at the park and ride, so they'd be dispersed throughout the island, and, and second of all, this is, this is something that if we got feedback, or looked at the data, and had to change the schedule, or, you know, either when we were rebalancing, or where we were rebalancing, that would be an easy thing for us to do. So just because, you know, we, we sets, and I think the, the mayor mentioned this as well, just because we say, all right, this is how it's going to work, we're going to have this many bikes, they're going to be at these places, if we recognize, all right, we maybe need more or less bikes, or we should move the places, or it'd be good to let them sort of move around for a couple of days, as opposed to moving them back to the same place every day, we can do that as well.
Tom?
If this is truly for first and last mile solutions, and, again, I probably missed this on the first chart, but when I walked in, you had multiple hubs for where the bikes could be stored. In theory, if it was for first and last mile solutions, you'd have 25, 25 on all options, 25 bikes that would be housed at the rail slash bus station area. Is that correct?
No.
I don't, I don't think so, no. Does, does everyone in Mercer Island, going a first or last mile, start at the same place?
Well, if, if they're going there, that's where they'd end up in the morning. That's where Saleem's questioning triggered this thought process in my head. So if there are other places on the island, and this is about first and last mile solutions, they'd all take the bikes to the station, and then somebody would have to come and get them and take them to other locations. So I'm just wondering if, if we set up hubs, I was thinking about, that might be one of the more popular destinations, so we'd need a bigger hub at that location for the bikes.
Yeah, and we could, we'd be happy to work with staff or other people to determine what makes the most sense for the hubs, and where we should place them, and how we should change them over time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think also, our hope is that they will get used many times during the day. So somebody might pick up a bike on the south end and ride it up to the park and ride, somebody else might be at the park and ride, you know, in the morning, after they've dropped it off, pick it up and go someplace else. People might go around the town center. There could be a lot of rides throughout the day, and that's why the bikes are really never stored anywhere, they are, they're available for use, they are just repositioned or rebalanced, depending on the usage. So we do hope we see a really busy heat map of where they go each day.
Okay, Counsel, are we ready for a vote? All in, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, 3-2, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next, we are moving to our second special business item, Planning Commission's Recommendation for Code Cleanup Amendment, the first reading.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Leon, Planner, City of Mercer Island, and tonight I'm going to be talking about the Code Cleanup Amendment. It's Process N R Z T R 18 dash 003. So first, a little background. Following the adoption of Ordinance 17C-15 in September 2017, which was the residential development standards, the city council directed staff to periodically review the code. So we basically, for this particular round, it's done internally, but we've also set up a user group for concerned citizens, contractors, architects, and the like, and we will be using their input, starting in the next round of code cleanup amendments, which will be in the fall of 2018. So for this particular round, we found that the new residential development standards created conflicts with other sections of the code, particularly with the definitions in Chapter 19, Point 16. So the staff and the Planning Commission have identified a few code sections that will need to be amended, and those are in the agenda bill. And the sections for this amendment require minor edits to improve consistency and correct errors. And, yeah, again, the purpose is to improve consistency between the different sections of the code, and to ensure that the code is consistent with other, or with the intent of the city council, and to correct errors in spelling and wording. So tonight is the first reading and discussion on the code amendments, and the next expected city council meeting... And the next expected city council meeting date for this particular amendment is on July 17th for a second reading and potential adoption.
Great, thank you. Council, any questions? Bruce?
I would just welcome Leon because I think your first time presenting to the council, so welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, council, Benson, okay?
I just, sorry. The only question I had, I mean, the one that I struggled when I was looking at it was actually former council member Dan Grous' email helped clarify that. But actually, I was just talking to Evan before. I wouldn't mind him going through that whole, well, either one of you folks going through that. Just elaborate on it. And as I mentioned to Evan, I found it, if I had looked at, more than just that section E, it made a little bit clearer, but perhaps you might want to elaborate on the reason for the change.
So for that particular section of the code, we're speaking about the fences on top of retaining walls for this one. Basically, the way that the code reads now for cut fill slopes, the maximum height is limited to 144 inches for the retaining wall itself. But the way that the code reads now is that the combination of the fence and the retaining wall is limited to 72 inches. So there's an inconsistency in the code there. So we're trying to bring that line and basically say that you can have the 144-inch cut fill slope with a 72-inch fence on top, which is sort of consistent with how the code was before.
Are you comfortable, Benson, or?
Yeah, I was a little. I mean, I don't know if Evan has anything to elaborate on.
I would just clarify Andrew's comments a moment ago. Good evening, council and mayor. Of course, I'm Evan Max, I'm the interim director of Development Services. The, I think Andrew used the term cut fill slope. And I think really what we're referring to here is the cut slope is limited to 144 inches. The combination, when I drafted the residential development standards, a mea culpa moment for me. I did not get this quite right. This cut retaining wall can be 144 inches. But the combination of the retaining wall and the fence on top was limited to a maximum combined height of 72 inches. So obviously, if you want to put a fence on top of the wall, suddenly your whole wall and fence combination decreases in height. And many people would want to put a fence on top of a 12-foot wall. This corrects that mistake. We are allowing a six-foot fence on top of that 12-foot cut wall.
Bruce?
Now it's clear I need to offer an apology because I called you Leon, which is your last name, not Andrew, which is your first. So my apologies for that.
All right.
Counsel, any further questions? I would entertain a motion. It does say move to set ordinance number...
I would move to set ordinance number 18C-05 for second reading and adoption on July 17, 2018.
It's been a first and second. Counsel, any discussion?
The only comment I'll offer is I think it's wise that we're doing these minor cleanup things on a regular basis. And I'm pleased that staff has collected a number of them and that we're getting that done. And so thank you very much.
And I would also just add my thanks. You did reference that you are setting up the user group that will start meeting in fall of 2018. And I know that was a very important element of the code when the code reset. So thank you for that. We'll look forward to hearing what comes out of it. Any further comments, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. So we now will move to our last item of special business, the first quarter 2018 financial status report. Welcome Finance Director Chip Quarter.
Due to the lateness of the hour, I could dispense with the presentation. I'm kidding. Okay, I'll be really fast. This is our first quarter financial status report for 2018. We're focused on the general fund. We'll look at REIT and then there's no action to take tonight. There's no budget adjustments. At a high level, 30,000-foot level, look at revenues. And so there's several ways to look at it. As a percentage of budget, we're quarterway through the year, 25%. Where A revenues are only at 18% of budget. It actually is normal, believe it or not. It's because of property tax receipts. They don't come in evenly throughout the year. They come in primarily April, May and October, November, in those big chunks. Everything balances out once you get to about April, May timeframe. On the expenditure side, we're 26.3% of budget. That also is normal. We do bi-weekly payroll, so 26 payrolls in a year. We've done seven payrolls of the 26 through the first quarter. That equals 26.9% of the budget. So that accounts for that at the high 30,000-foot level. Let's drill down. When you look at actual revenues for the first quarter of 18 compared to the first quarter of 17, it's flat. It's only up 39K, less than 1%. Why is that? It's not just one or two things. It's a mixture of stuff. The first of which, look at recreation program fees. That's up significantly, almost 40%, but that's deceiving. The reality is we're implementing a new recreation program system. There were summer class registration fees that were taken in and booked as revenue before they've been earned. And so we're fixing that going forward. That'll all even out come July. License permit zoning fees are up a little bit, 4.6%. Intergovernmental revenues up about 20%. That's only $18,000. That's due to the new marijuana excise tax, which we started receiving in the third quarter of last year. Court fines are down 20,000. That's about 18% drop. That's due to a 15% drop in case filings. That just goes, it just depends on officers. As you bring in new officers, there's a tendency to write more tickets and over time, they write less tickets. You talk to any judge and that's what you'll hear from them. So that just fluctuates from year to year. Utility taxes are down about 5%. That's not a surprise. Remember, electric gas utilities spiked last year because it was the coldest winter in 32 years in terms of temperature. So that's down seven and a half, or 7.4% first quarter of this year. And cellular's down almost 18%, which is concerning. That's a much higher drop than normal. And then property tax is down 11% again, due to the timing of property tax distributions. That fixed itself in the April, May timeframe. The bottom line, though, is it's flat. And that's what I want you to kind of focus on. Looking at general sales tax. So first quarter of this year compared to first quarter of 17, it's up only 1.6%. What's in red are kind of the big players up there. Construction's down 16%. And I've already told you this before, but just kind of reminding you. That is concerning because construction was down 26% last year. Still looking for that turn in construction sales tax and expect it at some point this year. Retail wholesale trades up almost 6%. Together, those two sectors represent 2/3 of your total sales tax receipts. I should just mention, if you're curious, there's a couple of big jumps in some smaller sectors. Let me just pick on all other sectors, up 64%. And so I don't get to talk about this very often, but there is a little category called unclassified businesses. And I can't disclose what that is, other than you'll find trusts and estates kind of stuff in there. And also the Department of Licensing. And so those two accounted for most of that bump in all their sectors. It's just one time. It's not that big. Utility tax, bottom line, it's down 4.9% first quarter of this year to first quarter of last year. What's in red there are kind of the drivers. Again, I've already mentioned electric gas utilities down 7.4%. That's almost half of the total utility tax receipts. Water, sewer, stormwater is up 6.8. That's primarily driven by two things. The utility rate increases in the city's three utilities plus water usage. Cable TV, this should get your attention. I've been expecting this. It's been flattening out over the last two years as people start cutting the cable, going to streaming services. Cable companies are trying to offer streaming services to prevent the loss of so many customers. That's down 7.2%. I haven't seen that kind of drop before. So paying attention to that. The franchise fee also is down. Yeah.
I just wanted to ask on the utility tax. I thought at an earlier point, you had said that the increase in rate was directly flowing to repay the contingency fund. But is it going back through the general fund on its way?
No, the actual increase goes directly to contingency fund. And so this is just the regular 5.3% rate on the city's water, sewer, stormwater.
So the 6.8% increase in water, sewer and stormwater utility taxes is mostly driven by the increase in cities. Are we seeing that in these financials?
Yeah, I'm referring to not that, there's not, forget about the tax rate. So it's the 5.3% tax rate is still going to the general fund. It's the utility rates. That 5.3% is applied to the increase in the utility bill. And those rates went up, whatever that combined increase was.
Okay.
And then cellular, usually that's been anywhere from 7% to 9% in terms of a drop, 18% drop. And that's, let's, I was assuming what was going on there is there was a receipt that, you know, didn't hit the first quarter. I didn't find that. And so I'm kind of watching that closely because that was very surprising. It's been on a decline since 2009, but that big of a drop I haven't seen ever. But overall, again, down about 5%. You've seen these before. Let me just remind you, this is development activity, looking at building permits issued again, first quarter for 13 through 18. And what you want to focus on is, and in gold is the single-family residential and the dark olive is all building permits. And single-family residential accounts for almost all of the building permits, as you can see, right? And so look at 18. 18 is higher than all the other bars to its left in the first quarter. Just reminders, I noted in my agenda bill, when I talked to Development Services staff and as I mentioned to the council, whenever that was, I don't remember.
A week ago.
Was it just a week ago? Feels like it was longer for some reason. That's primarily driven, as near as we can tell, by the change in the single-family residential standards, which took effect in November. And so there were a number of folks that were issued permits in the first quarter this year that vested under the old standards. We'll continue to watch that.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this may be more for Evan, but you know, as far as what's in the pipeline, you know, you explained as far as the first quarter. But can we look further ahead to see whether or not there's a drop in permit applications or just activity?
Short answer is yes. We are actually putting together building permit application data right now in advance of the budget. I don't have those numbers to share with you this evening. I want to honestly share them with Chip and make sure I'm giving him data that we're comfortable with year over year. So we are going back and actually looking at what we had in 2016, 2015 for quarters so we can compare year-over-year activity in terms of applications.
I'm sorry. But when you answered yes, you're answering yes to what? That you see a trend going down or is it staying steady or?
Pardon me, council member. I was answering yes to we have the data. I'm not yet prepared to speak to trends.
Salim?
So just to follow up for you, Evan. I've often looked at this and I've read this type of metric in these reports and it's permits and it's reported value. Am I sensing a pivot to square footage, new versus renovated? And maybe some sort of rebase line to see what historically we've added and renovated? And what that might produce in terms of sales tax revenue? Because the permit revenue is really irrelevant to us, right? It's a wash. What we're really looking at is what is this as an indicator of sales tax? Our data is a little skewed, but also is, what I think is skewed is the reported value of a permit in terms of what that is useful for, for tax revenues, sales tax revenues?
So I believe the numbers that you see on the screen in front of you tonight, the green and the golden rod, represent all building permit types being kind of everything across the board. And then a subset of that which is attributed to single-family residential, not just new home construction, I don't believe. I think we're picking up some of the additions and alterations in the golden rod number. We do have it broken out even further on our end as far as new single-family home construction versus additions, alterations. And what I'm trying to look at in response to Councilmember Wong and your question is really where are we seeing our valuations out of these permits? So what permits generate the most sales tax revenue and the most permit fee revenue? And present that to Chip, which again, I have not yet done. So we can get a better sense of what our projected permit revenues are and what our projected sales tax revenues are. That's what I'm working on right now. I don't have that yet.
So just a quick follow-up. Does it have a component of square footage in it? Is that in the data that you have?
Not as such right now. No.
When you say not right now, is that meaning that that might be in the future or?
So compiling this kind of data is actually very time-consuming because it doesn't automatically dump out of our permit materials. I have not asked our staff to put together gross floor area calc's at this point on a month-by-month, year-by-year basis. If we think the information is valuable long-term, to me, this information is only valuable if we can compare trends over time. So we can look at, how do we compare to 2013, 2014 on up through current day? At this point, I haven't heard that that information is actually worth the staff resource to compile it and put it together. That is part of the conversation I would like to have with Chip.
Thank you.
Moving on to building valuation, again, you've seen this before. And what will stand out is, single-family residential accounts for almost all of the building valuation except for 2015, those are the school district projects and the Hadley project. Pivoting to expenditures, let's look at them in terms of expenditure category. Salaries make up a little over 52% of the general fund budget. They're up, when you compare actual to actual, 18 to 17, they're up 3.7% driven by COLAs, step increases for represented employees and pay-for-performance for nonrepresented employees. Benefits are 20% of budget. They're up, and this is deceiving, 19% actual to actual. And that doesn't mean that we're going to end the year with benefits being 19% higher. Benefit should end up being five to five, maybe five and a half, in that range, higher this year versus 17. So why the 19% increase? Well, it's due to these. We moved police, there's two bargaining units, the commissioned and the support folks. We also moved AFSMI and non-reps to new medical plans, effective this year. These are lower-cost medical plans. That allowed us to create these VIBA count contributions, which are made in the first quarter of the year. So it's just a temporary anomaly. It all works itself out over the course of the year. Again, we should end the year 5% to 5.5% greater than last year, which actually is not bad, given that FIA's medical went up 9%. And those of us in AWC's medical plans, those went up 7% and change. Contracted services are 6% of the total budget, down 45% versus last year. That's all about the I-90 litigation and other related costs which were incurred last year. That was the 1.7 million and change, which has not been incurred this year, obviously. Thank goodness.
Can I ask a question on that? So if the budget has dropped 45% largely to do, largely due to the light rail mitigation not continuing to occur, I'm just curious if that was the big expense, why we would still have that in our forecast?
It's not in our forecast. I'd take that out. This is a budget, not a forecast.
It's a 17 versus 18 comparison. That's why the number's so different.
Okay, I get it now. So the 17 number was 45% higher, but you didn't include that number in your 2018 forecast?
This isn't a forecast.
It's an actual to actual?
Sorry, I keep using the word actual. I have a question, but I'll ask you offline.
Sure. You bet. Expenditures by department, and generally speaking, with some exceptions, most departments should be right around 25%, 26%. Given that it's one quarter of the year that's passed, non-departmentals, one of the two exceptions. That accounts for 11% of the total general fund budget. They're at 33% of budget in the first quarter of 18. Why? It's all about insurance payments to WCIA, Washington City's Insurance Authority. That's about a $600,000 payment incurred or paid in the first quarter of the year. It all works out over the course of the year. This is typical. City manager's office, this is unusual. They're at 33% of budget. King County elections, the voter registration costs for last year should have been billed to us in the fourth quarter of last year. Instead, they billed us in the first quarter of this year. And so that's just $85,000. That's just an anomaly. Question?
Yeah, so cash versus accrual, which are we? And if they send you a bill, you know, if we're on an accrual basis and they send us a bill when we haven't closed 17, why are we posting it to 18?
Yeah, because we only, we tried to cut off at the end of January. We'll go to sometimes February 15th in certain cases. This is received after that, after our cutoff.
Okay, so if it was before the cutoff, you would have posted it back to 17?
Absolutely.
Even though the books were open for many months after that?
Absolutely, yeah.
And just continuing on that point, the, the VIBA stuff, if you're prepaying something, are you taking the cash expense hit for it, or are you amortizing it by, with an accrual basis through, through, for instance, for, for example, the insurance, if you paid all your Washington City's insurance in January, do you take the expense hit all in January, or do you amortize it over pro rata, per month?
We just, and this isn't medical insurance, just to be clear, this is liability, property insurance, right? No, it's, it's just hits the first quarter.
Okay.
And then finally, REIT, good news, up 88,000, that's 13% in the first quarter of this year versus first quarter of last year. Why, always the drivers are number of property sales, looking at those that are 5 million or less are up 8%, so that's 94 sales in the first quarter of 18 versus 87 last year. Average sales price, sit down, up almost 20%, it's $1.5 million is the average sales price in the first quarter of 18 versus 1.26 million last year. I don't know what to say, other than holy cow. That's remarkable.
I just, I wanted to offer the comment about this chart, because it's, it illustrates perfectly what a 10-year trend doesn't do for you in a like, two or three or four-year forecast. You know, if you look at that average, how different a 10-year average is from the 2017 result, you know, it's just striking.
Yeah.
And so you, you start to kind of appreciate, even when you look at the 17-16, you start to appreciate how difficult it is to, to forecast that REIT, because of those fluctuations, and just to your point about going to 1.5 on a, on average. So anyway, good chart.
And good investment for Mercer Islanders. Budget adjustments, again, there's nothing. The next financial stats report for the second quarter will come to you September 4th, that will have budget adjustments. Any other questions from the council?
Counsel, any questions? Saleem?
The, going back to payroll, the 3.7%, I guess that's the run rate of the first quarter expense, do you expect that to continue, or what's your, what's your gut on that 3.7?
That is, let's see, the COLA for 2018 was based on the last, first half CPA W for last year, which was 3.2%. And so police and fire get 100% of that, AFSMI and non reps get 90% of that number. 3.7% looks a little low to me, and so I expect it to pick up a little bit, but be in the 4 range.
Counsel, any further questions? Okay, Chip, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, counsel, well, that concludes our business for the evening. I do have a question for the city clerk, do we need to excuse Councilman Member Wiesentiner and Wyker? Yes. Okay. Is there a motion to excuse our fellow council members?
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? They are excused. Well, super short evening, gives everybody the chance to go out and enjoy a little bit of sunshine. We next convene July 10th, have a safe and happy 4th of July.